FEH to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're not calling roll because everybody's present. Personnel committee discussion.
Member Bush asked me to put this on agenda.
I just thought we could try and find a date. To set up personnel group, start discussion about whatever we want to do with the superintendent.
Kelly was the chair of the committee, is that correct?
It's now the chair, Tony.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just wondering was there anything about looking at search firms or seeing how much search firms cost or getting to the board?
She did, and her last email to me was that we should just go with Wausau. Because we were on. The site escapes me, what was it, something from the, what was the website we were on?
We can.
Thank you, we can. Oh, we had those five options. And they probably were from all over the list. So, I agree with Kelly, I don't think we need to go further than that.
Yeah, the Wisconsin State School Board, they want to start out, they have a contract for 7,050.
Perfect.
They're the most recent one, they add to that contract.
How much was it?
Seven thousand seven hundred fifty four. Just like, they set a basic, and then if you say we want special things done, then they add to that contract. So you have to send in for a proposal, tell them what we want, and then they send us back a price. If that's what we want to do.
I know she wanted them to do the bidding. It's definitely up to you guys. Just telling you what she had told me.
But we could sort of set a date, but if you want, you want like a proposal to go to Wisconsin State School Board, probably in about a month in there to send it in, but we have to decide when we want to.
That's right. I thought if we had a committee meeting to discuss what we wanted to do, if we wanted action in December, then we would have had some discussion prior to just throwing action on.
So we can have a meeting, open.
The chairs, you said it. You're the chair, so you decide.
One have one next week.
What's that?
Tony and Epaniel.
No, I think it's you.
It's you.
Oh, it's me.
Yeah, it's me. One have one next week.
That should work for me.
Okay, what time is good?
What time works for you?
Six thirty.
Yeah, as long as it's not Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay?
As long as it's not Tuesday.
Ah, Tuesday. Want to do next Monday at six thirty?
Five thirty?
Five thirty, or do it earlier? I can do it earlier than five thirty.
Because everybody's welcome.
Sure.
Five thirty and twenty-six?
Maybe six twenty. Could you make it six?
Sure.
Next Monday?
Six PM on the twenty-sixth. We're still community. Oh, yeah, I know a little bit on, kind of consulting area.
It is.
Thanks.
Okay, FEH architect contract.
So at Friday's meeting, I'd ask Kevin to send me everything and anything that he had had. I sent that, once I got it, I sent it all off to you, and I also gave everybody a paper copy, including an email I received from Luke. I'd asked, sent him an email this morning. He got back to me this morning as well, so I was able to put all this together. In Luke's email, he referenced Larry and I both like the feel of FEH. Presented proposal for a full project, nothing was signed. But that, somewhere he references kind of a handshake agreement moving forward. On the back of that first page is basically, nothing's been signed. This just came from Kevin, so I don't know if he has a signed copy or if this is what he just had in emails, but originally they were proposing being the design builder, and then at the last meeting, they wish not to be a design-build contract, just simply serve as the architect for the project. I contacted the Cuba City School District last week to talk to their superintendent about how he felt things went. He was very satisfied with the process. I contacted Jeff Jacobson at Dodgeville with their successful referendum. They're using HSR out of La Crosse, and HSR had used, they had used HSR on a previous project. They did not, at this time, did not put out RFP for an architect firm. They had used this company before, just brought them back in for their addition. You know, it's, it's the board's decision where to go next. I do know that you've had Johnson Control in to do a study, then you had Nexus in to do a study, and then FEH came in and kind of duplicated it because they couldn't use anything from Nexus. So, you know, I don't know what the feeling of the board is moving forward, but...
So if we go, if we want to go with FEH, then our new firm would come in, have to start all over again? So it would be basically duplicating services?
Correct. Christie, you want, wish to speak to that? You know, pretty much your business would keep its records and information, correct?
Yeah, I'm Christie with FEH. Essentially, the public information that's posted on the referendum page could be utilized, but you can't duplicate it, so it would need to be kind of recreated by the, a different design firm, so we do kind of have a leg up in terms of what we've generated thus far, but that's where we're at.
So what you generated was just the sketch drawings? I mean, I haven't seen, seen no...
Yeah, the charrette drawings with the public drawings.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. We've started our own internal model, but that isn't, it's ours.
Sure.
That's true.
So to be clear, FEH and Mineral Point School District are not operating under any contract?
We were told to move forward, so we are moving forward based on direction last Friday, but we do not have a sign.
Told to move forward since the referendum, why?
If I mention, my understanding was instruction on Friday to keep moving forward. I don't know who specifically told Kevin we are moving forward.
No written agreement between Mitch and FEH?
I'm sorry, what's that?
No written agreement between Mitch and FEH?
No signed agreement to date, correct.
So with that said, the board and the community have to be very comfortable in knowing they're getting eleven point nine million dollars worth of goods and services. And the only way we're going to know that is to bid that thing out. From design to builder, anything else included in that proposal. Personally, I feel we're not getting twelve million, eleven point nine million dollars worth renovation or additions. And the sketch, the sketch that FEH drew up for us, shoot my fifth grader could draw that up. Six, three, seven? Therefore, I make a motion that we go out for bid on both the design, starting with the design tonight.
I'd like to hear a little more about your disappointment with FEH so far. I mean, other than...
In Luke's cover letter here, part of it's true and accurate. When Nexus left the table, they brought forth, if I remember right, Mitch or any of the board members that were on the board, possibly an eighteen, eighteen million dollar renovation plan for both, both buildings. It seemed like board had much say in that. At the time, the board wanted more of an à la carte style referendum, an idea. I mean, if we want to spend half a million, want to spend a million, two million, ten million, whatever. FEH came on board, they said they could do that for us. Can't remember exact timeline, six months later, we had an eleven point nine million dollar proposal in front of us. Very little board input, I can't. Any of you guys that, other than you, Tony, Larry Stappus did not support eleven point nine all the way through. I don't know how many, how many votes there were, probably half a dozen over the course of the last year. Larry Stappus did not support the eleven point nine million dollar. So that part of this is false.
They did come forward with a, if you remember earlier board meetings, they did come forward with if you did Phase One, it was seven million, if you, you know, four million, if you do, if you add the next component, and it was another two million.
Well, complicated that, Mitch, was a survey that the three hundred and sixty-five people took, and there was a little bit more than the majority of them decided, basically decided, according to that survey, what Mineral Point School District was going to, wrong thing to do. Referendum passed by only one hundred and fifty votes, and really the board hasn't had any discussion on that. The referendum was closed, it passed. The community spoke. Since the referendum, and I think we all probably have people say, or say to us, well, when are you going to start building that new school? It's like, no, that's not what the referendum was about. It was about renovating the old school and a few additions.
I went through elementary, I went through elementary school for ages.
Sure.
And I was second class through that whole building. When it was first built, now I would remember shiny and new. Well, I was pretty taken aback, I believe, with teachers' classrooms. I saw floors that were pumped over like cracks, and pumped over, and cracks in the walls. And this is, this is more and more the newer addition than the old, the first building. So I don't know who built that addition for us.
I couldn't tell you.
But I was relieved, I couldn't believe the shit was it.
And that's what started the discussion, calling up, bringing in a firm to identify the needs, space needs, and renovation needs of that building.
Did we do a study on the foundation? Whether that foundation supports the remodeling? Or, because, I mean, when I looked at those floors, I don't know. The wonder, and the cracks in these walls, they're kind of serious. And I don't know if we ever did a foundation study, did we?
Well, I mean, my understanding is that the foundation's going to be completely reinforced.
But I believe that you have yet to have an engineer actually look at it, am I right, Christie?
Part of the design was including a structural evaluation and then reinforcement.
But it hasn't happened yet, correct?
It has not happened yet. My understanding is that there was an initial report a few years back, but that can't be found, so we were starting based on information we received from Roger and what the report had previously said. So our understanding is just that the soil has settled below the corridor and will require some reinforcement, if you can speak, for that component.
Roger had set an engineering firm, came in and looked at that problem, that company, the guy that was here, that company no longer exists, and he works for somebody else, and unfortunately, we would have to pay this new place for him to come back out and kind of tell us the same thing, but there had been a study done several years ago. Again, I don't know if that's, if Roger was able to find that paperwork or not.
When I was walking through it, I thought, is it worth putting that much money into that if the foundation itself, you know, is it going to support, you know, in ten years? Are we going to come back? They hope, you know, we need to do something with the elementary building again, because now we're having these structural problems. That's, I mean, that was me, that's the first time I've been through elementary alone.
It's a valid question, I agree.
The current design cost does include a comprehensive, long-term solution to the space needs and the condition assessment report that were both conducted, so that is currently planned based on the referendum that was over.
Larry, let me ask you again. What is your disappointment with FEH's efforts in such a way that you feel like we need to look for another option?
Well, if you, if you look just at the price standpoint, I touched on it earlier, Doc. The eleven point nine. They had the, they had the gym broke out. I don't have the number in front of me. Two million, I'm saying. So we're down to ten million. The administrative office, the insurance, secured entrance. The numbers seem like they just don't, they don't add up, add up to me. And I know the, the number that is hard to pin down is the renovation of the existing building, like Tony was talking about, the repairs to the, the structure, but we've never been told what they're going to do. We just simply don't know. And if we give the green light to go ahead, write a check for eleven point nine million, I can't, I can't look the fellow taxpayer in the eye and say, well, I think we only got six million's worth of goods and services out of that. So how, how can we guarantee the board, guarantee our community, we're spending their money wisely?
Wouldn't that be through the general contractor, who, who you did, and says this is fair pricing for this? I'm just, you know, have you been to general contractor?
Absolutely, along with the design company.
Well, with the design company, wouldn't you be forced then to have all new designs again? Because that's proprietary, meaning they...
We have nothing.
Well, they must have something that, you know, we had a schematic.
If we had, if we paid for something, I'd like to see it tonight, or at some point.
Well, I think we've, how long we've been paying for something here, haven't we?
But what, what do we have?
Well, I know what you're saying, the sixth grade drawings, but I'm sure they have more detail than we have seen.
Since, since the referendum passed, which...
Yeah, but we haven't hired them yet as a firm.
Correct.
So I don't know if I would show my cards either, because...
Yeah, that's fine.
But I'm just...
And I'm not saying that, that FEH will not be able to, to bid on the project by all means. They, they do have a leg up, I agree.
Yeah, they have a leg up. But wouldn't we have to pay another firm to do an architectural assessment, designing thing? I mean, just like you do with FEH? Wouldn't we also pay before we bid?
If we want, if we want a gym, which I think we owe the community a gym, because that's what they voted on.
Yeah.
We want a secure entrance.
Right.
And we want a renovation for the existing building. We know what we want.
Yeah, but they would have to do a site study, and somebody would have to spend some dollars to get that, wouldn't you think? Because they can't just give you a design and sort of speak, be encompassing unless they can come through and spend time. I'm just asking, didn't we pay FEH for this? I mean, what we have so much?
There have been some payments made at FEH, some of the services.
Is this sort of the same bind you ran into with, what was it, Nexus or JCI? Because you started paying them, and then finally broke the contract, which cost, I think, thirty-five thousand dollars? Something like that, wasn't it?
With Nexus, we didn't pay them a dime.
Oh, you didn't pay Nexus a dime, but how about JCI? Was that the one that got the thirty-five thousand?
That was for, for work done earlier.
Yeah.
Performance contract, possibly.
That's what I was worried about with that.
That's what I was thinking, I mean, are we going to be paying again for the century? You know what I'm saying?
Anything we have paid for, we should be able to get. Anything that this district, under contract, is ours. Would everybody agree to that?
Yeah, I mean, in the packet here, Larry, there's a facility condition assessment, space needs evaluation, facilitating public input, and the onsite design workshop, the charrette. Those were all paid services.
Which we have the information back for.
Correct. So you're asking, what do we have post-referendum that we pay for? And I don't, I don't think we've seen anything yet, but I know that they've been having preliminary meetings. Kevin even said that their services to date post-referendum would be upwards of twenty grand.
That's what he said Friday morning.
Right.
Right. But if he's not under contract, then nobody told him to start that process.
Right, so, I mean, then back to the, back to the making sure we're getting our money's worth. It's not like what you're saying is you're concerned that the project is overpriced. That the price is overestimated. Okay. And to Everett's point, you know, the price of the project, absent of the design fee, is all going to be contingent on construction, supplies, labor, stuff that's separate from the designer, right? And if I'm not mistaken, the design fee is a percentage of the total, and of the end cost, right? So...
Was it a percentage, or was it a...?
It's a percentage.
So what incentivizes a company to, to lower, lower the project if it's based on the percentage?
I think that's standard, very...
I know, but if, if we had two design firms in here saying, we can get this done for eight million, the same thing, instead of eleven point nine, we will, we will never know that if we sign on with FEH.
Okay, I see, I see what you're getting at. So it's my understanding that the RFP is not for the whole price of the project, the RFP is for the designer fee.
Nobody's giving a price on the whole building.
Right.
That's not what we're seeing.
Yeah, they said it was just a nest of them.
What we're saying is...
They said they hoped it was way over.
Yeah, FEH is offering, what do you say, six and a half percent, something. Kramer Brothers said that's extremely competitive.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's what we'd be looking for in RFP, is what is your fee on the project? Right, what's, what percentage you're going to charge? Am I mistaken there?
Along with, what do you expect this project to cost us?
Okay, so, so another, another firm would have to come in and do a site evaluation, like FEH has already done, that we've paid them several thousand dollars to do, in order to get their opinion on how much the whole project's going to cost, right?
Technically, there is one other firm that has already done that, and they've never been paid, Nexus. I don't know if they do have...
Didn't we create out of that country?
By, they will, they, they've never been paid yet.
And I don't want to be, I don't want to have sad, I don't want to boot that sad to FEH, or somebody else who thinks, you know, we want them to do this, we didn't sign a contract, but we're just giving you a word. I don't want to have Mineral Point School District, you know, something, when we put out a bid, well, we're not going to bid Mineral Point because they'll back out with it every time because they don't like what we do, because we don't sign a contract or anything. I don't want our, I don't want the district to be known as something like that. I'm just, I'm just saying that. And I understand all of the things, Nexus, I, I know that.
It'll, it'll sound better, put it this way. Them, them board members of Mineral Point, they really cross their, cross their Ts and dot their Is and ask a lot of questions. They're not afraid to say no. That's going to look a whole lot better than...
Right, if, if nobody at all agreed to certain things with FEH, I'm just saying.
Eleven point nine million, you need a contract.
Here's what I'm worried about, Larry. I, I get what you're saying, and I, in theory, I support where you're going, because we want to get the best deal, I get that. What I want to avoid happening is a delay of the process to the point where, when Kramer Brothers or whoever our builder is ready to start in the summer, which is the golden window, right, to get stuff done.
Correct.
Right? If, if by that date, when school is out, if we don't have a contractor ready to go, lined up at the fence, because we delayed the design process two months looking for a designer, then we got to answer to the community on that, because then we're delaying, you know, maybe an entire school year.
And maybe I'll delay the cost of the project.
If we start in summer, because we're late, you know, so if this, if this request or proposal process takes, you know, two weeks, you know, I would sit okay with that, but I don't know, it doesn't sound like we're guaranteed that kind of turnaround time.
And all that would entail in two weeks is people bidding a percentage. I mean, the work that was done ahead of time through the space needs assessment, through the work that we've paid for already, with the square footage and stuff like that, if we're looking for a total price from somebody, that's going to take time for them to come in, get what we have, design a scheme that they believe, and then because we're not putting out a proposal on a specific plan, we don't even know if it's apples to apples if we get numbers back. So we may get a cheaper number back from somebody else, but we have no idea what, what that entails compared to what we were given.
It has to be a comfortable, there's a lot of unknowns.
And I guess, I don't feel like we have a sixth grade drawing. I feel like we have a two-scale drawing that a, a professional preliminary budget was developed from.
The drawings that we got in the, from the charrette?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think they had rulers out, they were drawing on, by scale, and they developed a budget figure. I think the majority of the price of the budget is going to come down to bids. It's going to come down to bids, not their percentage, which...
We have a, we do have a motion, does anybody want to second it? Otherwise, the motion will die. Can you restate the motion?
I would, I would just point out that the action item for the architect contract is under action items, it would necessarily be here.
Okay, see, the motion could die anyway.
Yeah, this is just discussion, so the motion could at this point in time. At this point in the agenda...
Larry, put your motion on hold and...
I believe you can act on, on any, any listed item on the agenda. But we can, we can hold it off on, I don't, we can get down.
I mean, I'm going to throw a different kink into this, and it has nothing to do with FEH. Over the last week, week and a half, I have, I had so many people come to me or call me and are really upset that it's like, why was a new school not put in the option? And I actually started keeping track, and I'm over a hundred calls. And it was almost evenly split between people that voted yes, because they didn't think we would do anything else, and people that voted no, because they just plain wanted a new school. My problem with this entire situation is the board has never really taken the bull by the horn and discussed this whole situation. And now we're facing the idea of spending twelve million dollars because the public has told us we can. Mitch did find out from DBI that theoretically we could go to referendum again in April and ask for more money and go for a new school. And I'm only throwing it out there because the number of...
I think they've talked to me about it too, and I didn't keep track of that.
But I can't go by that. If we would decide to go down that road, I would say we would need another survey, but maybe a better survey.
You have a January twenty-second deadline to have the language and resolutions approved for an April referendum.
I mean, I'm one of the ones that was totally opposed to even a thought of a new school, honestly.
So I got two comments on that. One is, we did talk about a new school. And we talked about it...
When?
Well, we voted on the draft of the resolution three times.
This is true.
Okay? And we were very clear, we said, this is a draft, we would appreciate community input until the next board meeting, so that we could revise this resolution.
And we never got it.
And we, we didn't get a hundred calls, but, but we talked about prices, and the reason why it doesn't seem like we talked about the new school very much is because a lot of the discussion revolved around how high of a price twelve million dollar was for remodel. And so some board members were only comfortable with seven million, some board members said, well, I, I think we shouldn't do it for more than six million. Some people were saying, why don't we just do it for two or three million?
Yeah, some wanted just to correct your behavior, that's all.
Right, so, you know, I, I think that there were some concerns that even a twelve million dollar project was too much, and it didn't even pass unanimously, right? So I think we had, you know, and, and I mean, maybe we could have done a better PR job saying, listen, Mineral Point, this is a remodel of the current elementary school for eleven point nine million dollars. If you want a new school, speak up, or if you think it should be something different, please speak up. Maybe we should have done a better job of that. But I think that there was plenty of opportunity leading up to this, if people were paying attention at all in what we were talking about, to steer the ship in a different direction. Plus, the resolution went to the community as is and passed. Now, that all said, if, if we want to gather community input and pray to God we get at least three hundred sixty-five surveys this time, if we're lucky, and, and just say, new or remodel, and base our decision on that survey instead of an eleven hundred yes vote on the remodel, you know, I would be a little nervous about that, but I would, you know, if everyone's ears are perked and everyone's paying attention now, and you think we would get eleven hundred survey responses on a, on a new or remodel input, you know, I think we've got a little bit of time to make that happen. But we just got to be aware that how many people in this community voted for this remodel?
I respect.
And, and.
I was going with that.
How small our survey was.
I respect that, and, and I'm not saying anymore that we don't need to spend the eleven point nine million, or, or whatever the case is. Jeff and Tony have good point, and, and I've heard, as I talked about earlier, as early, at, as early as last Friday, Saturday night at the, the musical, I don't know how many of you went to that, the High School Musical down at the theater, fantastic. If you haven't, if you haven't been to one, go to one, it's worth your time. Is it worth talking about? Putting a survey out there and saying, this is the, I mean, I mean, the board, the board has been hearing from both sides. We're, we're either going, we are going to remodel the elementary school unless there is an overwhelming support to move, move this school.
And you have to remember that eleven hundred votes, there wasn't another choice for the new school.
Right, I understand.
If you, if you wanted it remodeled and you didn't have a choice, maybe those people, maybe half of those people would have said, I want a new school.
I totally get what you mean. No, I totally get it, so. And, and that's the catch-22 we're in right now, but I just want to remind everyone, I want to be very clear. We put out a survey that included the new school option, and there were three hundred sixty-five surveys, and that survey was almost thrown out because of the poor response rate, okay? So we have to be careful, we put another survey, how many responses do we want? To, for us to consider it an acceptable subset, an acceptable representation of what the community really wants in order for us to move forward? Let's say we get three hundred sixty-five responses again, and it's eight to two, eighty to twenty, in favor of a new school. Are, are we going to listen to those three hundred sixty-five people who spoke? You know, versus.
See, Doc, I'm not even sure that we need to do the survey, sorry, didn't mean to catch off.
Okay.
If we went in April and asked if people wanted a new school, we would still be able to fall back on this one, according to DPI. So hypothetically, let's just say we go in April and say, okay, we really want to make sure the public understood you passed the eleven point nine, but we want sixteen or eighteen, whatever it is, for a new school, and put that out there. If that fails, it's our understanding that we can still, we would still fall back on the eleven point nine.
So the referendum, Jeff, as I understand it, would read, do you want a new school that priced at X, eighteen? Or go with the current?
No, you can't.
Oh, okay, you can say it that way.
We can't, we can't use the eleven point nine because that, that has been directed to be spent strictly at the ele, the old elementary. My suggestion is that, I guess I really want to make sure the public understands we're going to spend twelve million dollars at the old elementary unless a second referendum passes. And let's be frank, it's, our credibility isn't, isn't the highest at this point because we're questioning what we've done. I'm only throwing it out there, so.
How were the surveys sent, were they?
You had an opportunity to do it.
On my name?
Hell, yeah. So my suggestion is not to go for a survey, but just to go.
I think that's. All that aside, do we know about the legality of the fact we already levied four hundred thousand dollars for this referendum? I mean, the, the next question is fine, but we levied money, I mean, with a certified levy now, for this referendum.
What, when I was asked to contact the DPI to ask about this, what they told me was that you cannot, because the language in the resolution was specific to that address and the projects to be done, that's what that money needs to be used for. If there's interest in a new school, you would have to go and ask for the complete dollar amount for the new school. But again, you would need somebody to put a design together so that a builder could look at it and, and give you an estimate as to what that cost would be. The work that FPH had done, that the price tag was around eighteen million for a building out here, if that, if my memory serves me correct. So if you were to go in April, you would have to go to the community and ask for permission to issue bonds for the total amount of that project. You would leave the eleven point nine two million dollars that, that resolution, you would leave that basically hanging out there and, and not act on it. And at the end of five years, the authority to issue bonds for eleven point nine two million dollars to remodel and renovate the elementary school falls off the books. So if you go in April and the community says yes, in essence, the community has now given you permission for thirty million dollars. And the, the gentleman, the school finance at the DPI said you would have your eighteen million dollars to do your new building. He says, what are you doing with the old one, you're going to tear it down? I said, I, I don't believe that would be in the plans to tear it down. He said, so he said, okay, so here's the scenario. Three years down the road, something happens down there and you wish to repair it. You have authority for eleven point nine two million dollars to make renovations to that building. You could issue bonds without having to go back to the taxpayers because they've already given you that authority. So anytime within the five-year window, you could, you could make that direction, sell a bond, sell bonds worth three million dollars to do some renovation down there. Exactly, exactly, yeah, yeah, why would you want to, right? You know, because you, you're saying, we don't want to do that down there now. The, you know, you're right, it was a hundred and fifty votes. When I was in Highland, it was four votes that passed that referendum to do an addition at the Highland School District. And according to Debbie Heisner, eighty-six percent of the registered voters in the city of Mineral Point voted in, in the November election. I, I don't know what it was at all the other townships, but. You know, when here, and we talked about a fifteen point five percent return on the surveys, and you have eighty-six percent of the voters showed up to vote.
Well, but we're not going to get that turnout in April.
You are not, and if, if we don't go in April, it'll be a year because there won't be anything next November.
Yeah, the, the problem I had, the only problem I had with referendum is you didn't have a choice for a new school. You said either a twelve million dollar renovation, basically, or that's it. So I think a lot of people said, well, if we can't have a new school, we have to fix the one we have, so let's get the twelve million dollar referendum. Whereas if you would have two choices there, you might have gotten a new school. I'd rather have a new school, you know, we're going to plan eighteen million on a new school and twelve million on a fifty-year-old building.
By law, we could only do two questions, and we had the three hundred fifty thousand recurring, and that's why. Unfortunately, hindsight, maybe we shouldn't have asked for the three hundred fifteen thousand. Well, okay, so, do you want to just?
May I make a question?
Sure.
No, I just wanted to raise a few points. I was just going to note that the design fee that we're proposing for the project is independent of the overall construction cost of the project. So we're the owner's representative, we want to give the school district their best value for the money spent. I mean, it's, it's a goal to be effective with the tax dollars. So, so if we can do more with the project for the same fee, or, or for the same construction cost, or do the same amount with less construction cost, it would help us as an ethical design professional to make that happen for the school district. I just want to put that out there, that the design fee is kind of independent of the construction cost and, and the construction fee. So there are two different items that you're talking about. And I just wanted to put it out there that we did work with the elementary school planning committee that the board tasked with coming up with the strategic plan for how to move forward. So we did work with a board authorized kind of entity as we put together the, the plans and the, from the survey, we worked directly with the committee on the survey, we worked with the committee on the programming, and we worked with staff. So I think you have a well-vetted potential solution, whether it's what you choose to do or not. It, it at least is, is vetted through the, the planning committee.
I did hear a lot of, oh, concern with the surveys. Some people didn't get them until three or four days before they were due. It didn't, it didn't seem like a well orchestrated effort, that, that survey.
Okay, can we move on? Do you have anything else?
We're moving on to action items?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you have something you'd like to say.
We'll talk about it again here in a little bit.
So you kind of figured, suspend the five thousand, suspend your policy for referendum? Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass, number one on the action item, suspending.
I have a question, so.
You got to have a second.
Do we have?
I'll second open discussion. What, what are we suspending it, we're suspending it to no dollar amount, I'm just curious.
Letting you see what we're going to do. Or no, we're suspending it?
Sorry.
Yeah, we, we have a dollar in mind of, like, if we're to spend five thousand, can we spend three million dollars?
Well, I think, no, what we're saying is we approve.
Oh, the eleven point nine?
Yeah, we're going to approve the whole budget, that's, includes everything.
A lot of stays within the budget.
Correct.
Okay.
So I think the only wrinkle to address Larry's concern is that should we set some kind of requirement, say something is X percent over budget, or it's going to cost this much more than we thought it was going to? Do we need to be aware of that? And, you know, Kevin had said, well, anything that's coming over budget, we're going to let you know. But if, but if we want to be more specific, you know, that's up to everyone's comfort. I, I would, um, is it Christie?
Yeah, it's Christie, yeah.
So if, if we would go, if we would go with FPH and there was a actual contract that says you're going to design this project, you know, Kevin said it's kind of in your routine practice or protocol or whatever, that anything that was out of the ordinary for budget would come to the board as a, as an FYI. Is, is that kind of a judgment call, or is, do you guys have a more formulaic approach to that?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. If we don't have it in the conceptual budget, or it was an expense that wasn't in the soft costs or an owner expense that wasn't anticipated, it would come to the board. Or if it was a cost that was, we don't have a hard and fast rule with a percentage above. Sometimes, certain things come in lower so we can shuffle some money in, in the soft costs to maintain the total. But I would say if it's more than, if there's an arbitrary number more than fifty percent than anticipated above the number, then it would come to the board, or we can. Typically, you're in the know on all the costs because they come before the board or at least are part of the committee members and get, get disseminated in some fashion. It's, it's predominantly the, the soft costs, so it would be like the site survey fee, we would come for approval for that, but it was within the budget. So if, if you have an authorized person to sign those papers on behalf of the board, and, and then if they're in alignment with the conceptual budget, then we wouldn't need board approval. It would still be provided for informational purposes, but it could improve more expeditiously than, than coming to a board meeting. And then if it's over, you just would let the board know.
So you'd have a total budget of something about twenty thousand, a king and a ten, and if other figures, twenty thousand, but a king and a thirty, and that would still be within the budget, correct?
Yeah, depending on, on board direction, kind of on how you'd like us to handle that. If it's within the, the overall bubble total, it, it's up to you on, on how you want to do this.
And as this project gets, gets going, there would be a, an update at every board meeting on how the project's progressing and how it's on budget. I'm new to the whole experience, so.
We, we can provide board updates, so you'd get to see me again, which is always pleasant, hopefully. But yeah, we would provide regular board updates, and you would also be pretty to the meeting notes from the planning committee where we would discuss any of those items that would come up as well.
You would have, once the scheme design is done in January or whatever, you would have a conceptual budget to approve at that point, correct?
It's, sometimes it's a little bit after schematic design, but yes, it would be around that.
But if you start actually spending a lot of money, we'll have.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, um, yes.
Like, what, before the summer?
So, so I apologize, I didn't watch the video from when Kevin was here, but there's a schematic design process, and then we would present it to the board and get official sign-off approval to move into the next design phase. And then concurrent with that, there would be a schematic budget. And then as we get more detailed, you would then get updated budget information, and, and you would definitely be in the know of the process at all times, yes.
Do you want to comment on this motion?
Fair minimum, I would like to see any change orders be run in front of either the operations committee chairperson or the board president. I don't think that's too much to ask.
I think the goal of this is, if we get into it and there's something that comes out that would halt operation until we're able to get a quorum together to approve, that we're basically giving Mitch sign-on of approval, which I would imagine he's not going to do if it's half a billion dollars different.
Correct.
It's for the, the things like having to wait to get the topography done until we can get a quorum together that spends six thousand dollars.
Christie, what happens, since Andy made that remark, my light bulb came on. What happens if you're a couple of months into the project and, and something major comes up at half a million dollars? So we now have a half million dollars left to spend of our eleven point nine, then what gets canceled?
Are you talking about the construction cost?
Anything.
Because in terms of big-ticket items, the, the soft cost portion of the conceptual budget is a hefty number, but the pieces are generally smaller. It would be a matter of, if something comes up as we do our, you know, potentially our structural evaluation of a piece, we think, oh, this might cost more, then it's up to the design team in conjunction with the, the planning committee to come up with solutions. How do we maintain the goals for the project that were set by the elementary school planning committee? How do we maintain our goals while, while providing the, the end solution? So it, it's kind of up to the, the group that meets every two weeks.
You've got enough built into the slot.
We have some contingency built in, yes, and there's some fluidity with some of the details. Right now, we just have a concept, so as, as things get more detailed, we would take a, a kinder pencil to some of those costs. And if there's more left over that we can use to make improvements or kind of weather any sort of ups, we would use it as such.
Thank you. Is the current contingency fund somewhere around, I don't know, ten percent?
Fifteen.
Fifteen percent?
Yeah, I believe it's fifteen percent.
We have a design contingency and a construction contingency that I believe totals fifteen percent, which is where we want it to be from, from a conceptual budget standpoint. And that number would then become less as we get more detailed.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments on this?
Do you want to? Yeah, I think, I think this is a little early, I mean, I mean, the next two items are going out, requests for proposals, and we might get something entirely different from the general contractor, if, if we get somebody besides Kramer Brothers, or if we get somebody besides FEH as far as the architect, there's no rush on, on this, how did this even get on the agenda, Jeff or Mitch, do you guys remember?
On Friday.
Yeah.
On Friday, I asked you to approve sixty-five hundred dollars worth of site survey, and I'd asked, is this something that you wish to come back to everything, according to your policy, anything over five thousand dollars requires board approval, and, and you had asked for this to be put on tonight's agenda.
Only because it was going to get acted on, it was on Friday's agenda.
It was a discussion item on Friday's agenda, and you said I'd like the weekend to think about it, so you asked...
It was going to get acted on, I, I did not request to put this on tonight's agenda only because I thought it was going to get acted on Friday morning, and I wanted, I wanted us to have the weekend at least to think about it.
Right.
Otherwise it would have been acted on on Friday.
I was, I was asking if this is what you want on Friday.
Again, if, if you're asking me, I, I don't think, I won't support it, I, I think it's, it feels a little fishy to me right now, and there's, what else is going to come up in the next six months that we're going to have to spend money on?
Would all depend on what you do, if you do anything with FEHs, if, if you decide to go with FEH, probably not a lot.
And again...
If you're going with...
Mitch and fellow board members, I, I believe we're going to be meeting probably more than once a month going through this process, so there's going to be ample opportunity to...
So I'll withdraw, okay?
You have a motion? You have a motion in a second, so you have to vote on that motion.
Okay.
And it can be, it can die.
Okay.
Or, or can you, I know it's a motion in a second, so you have, you have to vote on it.
Okay.
So...
Unless Andy decides to withdraw his second, then he can.
No, I don't think so, Jeff.
Well, I think we're going to vote on it at some point.
Eventually.
Regardless, and the, the feelings won't change about...
Yeah, it doesn't matter who's, who's...
Because we're not talking about a specific situation, so I'm going to maintain my second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, any other discussion?
The motion is to suspend this board policy of five thousand spending limit.
For the specific...
For this project, correct.
And, once again, I am, I am not supporting it, and I encourage the rest of us not to support it.
And I can agree with Larry on that, it might be a little bit early since we, we don't even have a contractor architect, so, but like you said, we're going to eventually do it, but...
Let's find out what other schools do first, what, what does Dodge hope to do?
Maybe we can, maybe we can have a different idea of...
Right.
Have a, have a number, maybe we'll have a number.
Voice roll call.
Do you want to roll call? Uh, Chambers?
No.
Bush?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stefas?
No.
Bastin?
No.
Motion carried, four to three. Okay, RFP language for general contractor.
I do not have anything from FEH, they were going to put together the language for RFPs, Christie, did Kevin give you anything?
I have a draft, I think Kevin would like to give it one more go-through, and then he'd email it tomorrow, and then it, it could be emailed out to the board members, so I do have a draft, we received some, it's more than input this morning that impacted the draft, so I'm more comfortable sending it quite yet, but I do have the draft, and, and you can, it's dated for, it's dated for tomorrow, so I will email it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have to, we would have to table this because you don't have any language.
Table both. Okay, so I knew that we tabled the RFP language for general contractor.
Well, hold on, aren't we here to...
We can, we don't have to do it. We can discuss it though, what we want on there, is that what you're saying?
Well, we have been used to put out a request for board approval, so have we?
No.
So, we're...
FEH was going to, was going to put language together for general contractors, they were going to put an R, RFP language for us to then release to come to these...
The architect, and they haven't done that, so it's kind of hard.
But what do we, but, but what, yeah, what do we do with the architect, if we are going to possibly put this out for bids, then we have to come up with our own, is that what you're testing?
I think what we need to vote on is are we going to go with FEH now, and keep the process going, and draw up a contract to that effect, or are we going to stop the process and put the, put the design project out to bid?
And possibly pay out, um, extra, because...
For site evaluation?
Yeah, and that, for what I'm seeing, for the things that would be there, I mean, a lot of this is public input, okay, we've already done all that, but sure, so it's basically twenty-five hundred, and then twenty-five to seven.
Do you want to make that a motion?
I have a motion, I have a motion to table the language for RFP for general contractor.
There's no second, so...
There's no second, it died.
Okay.
Do you want to make a motion out?
Okay, so, what just happened, there, there's no motion?
No motion.
Number two?
Correct.
So are we discussing number two, or we're...
It's kind of hard to discuss it because we don't have no language.
Yeah, you have to tell tomorrow's.
Okay. All right, so, we need a motion, we're going to, we're going to table number two then, is that what we're doing?
Well, you just said you wanted to decide if, you wanted to decide if we're going to, on the...
But that's on the three.
That's really, that's really...
Yours is still a question, Tony.
So the table's...
Tony, yours is still a question.
The question was, should we...
My table's still on, on the table.
I will, I will second the motion to table the language for the general contractor.
Okay. All right. It's like, is there a timeline? Why isn't that...
Okay, uh, okay, so the language, table RFP language for general contractor, Dahl?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Stefas?
Yeah, um, yes.
Bush?
Yeah.
Chambers?
Yes.
Bastin?
Yes.
Okay, seven oh.
Okay, we're at number three. Architectural contract.
So we're back into the first discussion that we were having, essentially, this is, the question that I have on this is, if we did have another architecture firm, we don't really have an idea of what it would cost to get the site plan, to get the design, that's my biggest question in here, because a lot of, we've, we've paid FEH a lot of money over the last, whenever we've, since we've been working with them, but that doesn't pertain to necessarily the elementary school, so that's where I'm trying to figure out what number it is that we have paid them to do that design, or, or site evaluations, kind of like Larry said, we know what we want, but this architecture firm, the design, we still have to go inside, see what, do an assessment, it's still updated.
Now, I just have some questions about past history, because I don't know, Nexus, was that an architectural firm, Nexus, or is that JCI, or what, what's what?
Nexus was more so toward a, a performance.
Performance.
Contracting.
Okay.
Like, uh, remodel, they, they get additions, of course.
Okay. So they didn't develop plans or anything?
Oh, yeah, they did, absolutely.
Well, the reason I'm trying to figure out the past history, although you didn't have to pay them, is that a comparable cost would occur in order for somebody to put the thing to bid, or they do the site work without being bidding, I'm just wondering?
I think they already have it done.
Nexus does.
Absolutely. And that's something we don't ever talk about, we, we could bring them back on board to do exactly what they're doing here, and their fees would, I think, since, since they, they've already, they, they've been through the buildings.
Yeah.
We have, we got a book to fit.
They would have similar concept plans like those?
They're more capable of designing this project, what we're talking about.
Okay.
I do feel comfortable with that. Through the, through an RFP, we would know that.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting, what, what sort of Nate is saying is we paid, gave what we got, would we have to end up paying more money to get a bid?
Yeah, I don't know, because, and that's the thing, where, some, I mean, some people, these bigger ones, they would have to charge.
They would have to do it on their own to bid it.
You mean, just look at it and bid it, and then...
Or we'll pay five firms to do five...
That's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
Actually, if I'm saying five firms, I'd say it's thirty thousand.
You'd think if they wanted the job, they would do it.
For free.
Exactly, that's how we'll propose it, my role.
Or would they roll the cost into...
To the, yeah, the final...
And with seven hundred and sixty thousand, I think, is FEH's design cost, so, I mean, yeah, I guess I don't know, did we pay this and this, or was it rolled in, I mean, I know we paid some of the other numbers, you know, I don't know, it's a lot of...
And Nate, you, you've asked the question a couple of times, again, anything that we have paid for is our information, if there, if there was a design study, investigation done on the foundation, like you talked about, Tony, that is ours, there hasn't been, there hasn't been nothing done other than visual looking, the cracks in the house, to my knowledge.
That's accurate.
The, the electrical grid, the makeup of the elementary school, there has been no certified plan done to enhance that, upgrade that, in my correct?
Correct, is part of the facility assessment what the actual procedure or the effort required to do design drawings to make those corrections have not been done?
Right, and that is part, part of that seven, that seven hundred and sixty thousand.
Part of the design fee does include the MEP scope of the project, and it's, it's an all-inclusive design fee number for a complete design package for the project.
And if two or three weeks from now, we're sitting here, and it does make sense to continue with FEH under contract, so be it, I'll, I'll back it, but then we will know.
Can we have something by the number ten board meeting? I'd be, I'd be happy to, to vote at that meeting on a designer.
Twenty days.
We would have to reach out to some, we would...
We'd have to write an RFP, and...
But all, all, again, all this RFP is for, is for an architect.
Right.
It's not for a schematic design and a number, it's for an architect, so we're going to get proposals that say, here's our fee, and that's what we're going to get, is a fee, and no idea what the person we choose, I mean, we could put that in the RFP, but I think you're talking, I mean, Rome wasn't built for this project in a week.
Right.
I think you're talking extending the timeline significantly if you want multiple bids on a full project, right now, we're just talking about RFPing an architect to do schematic design, to do construction design, if we want to broaden that, that's something different, and then, I mean, just to reemphasize, what Greg mentioned is if you do that, at times you're locking yourself into specific subcontractors, am I right? When he, he mentioned if you, if you put it out for a, a number, then you are not keeping the competition open for competitive bidding to get the most out of that number.
That's for the general contractor.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right?
Right, but we're talking about, we want a number for the whole project.
No, I don't...
Otherwise, I'm saying, all we're going to get is a, is a fee number, and what, what have, what do we know about any of these architects? Are we just going to go with the lowest number? Because how do we know a slightly higher number doesn't get us another million dollars worth of project for our twelve million?
I think that's, part of the question is, what do we want to know in the proposal just in addition to the fee? Do we want to, and I don't really know the answer to that, but I mean, what do you want to know about a different architect, about what they can offer besides a competitive fee, I mean, are you looking for a whole new quote on the entire project?
Architects in general, building contractors in general, have a pretty good idea when it comes to new construction, what that thing is going to run, so Jim, probably did that with, they, they wouldn't, they could sit right here, Christie could sit here right now, and have four people, same, same architects, in, in the same business, tell us that's going to run three hundred dollars a square foot, or, or a hundred dollars a square foot, or whatever the number is, that, that should be pretty simple, I would say.
So the project is not overpriced, then?
I, I don't know, that's what I want, that's why I want to make sure, I can go back to, to the taxpayers of this community and say, we got eleven point nine million dollars worth, how else are we going to know that, Doc?
I understand where Larry's come from on this, because our numbers came from FEH, FEH is a design bill, okay, they're a designer and an architect, if we wanted the numbers for the construction, that's the contractor, right now, so, I mean, I, I hate how we keep pairing these together, because that's how people get, we lose money that way, because we're paying this company to oversee this company to oversee this company.
Right.
So we need to look at them separate, we need to quit comparing them, we don't want a total cost of everything right now, we want an architect to say, this is what needs to happen, and we talk to a general contractor separate, we're not paying contractor to pay, or the architect to pay the contractor to pay the, whatever, so, we, I, I think that's the biggest thing we got to stop doing is compare, is pulling them together, that's just my opinion here.
Yeah, are we, are we not happy with what FEH has done for us? I'm, I think, have they not done a good job for us?
We simply don't know, Tony, on this pro...
I'm just wondering, and I wasn't here, so I mean, I'm just asking, a reason why, you know, they've done a lot for us, from what I've read, you know, are we happy with what they've done, or we're not happy with what they've done, or we don't know what it would have cost because we didn't ask anybody else?
I think that's it right there, we didn't ask because we don't know, I know...
One, one project that they did do, the roof project, I know, I do know what the roofing contractor was paid, and in comparison to the project, somebody else got paid a boatload of money, and, and we can find out the balance, I guess.
I would like to dr- um, address that, if you may, please, no, just, there was added scope in addition to the roofing, so the building was cleaned, there was masonry, you got new sealant, there, there was more than just the roof replacement that was done as part of the project, and we are the, um, performance contractor in that instance, so we are writing the letters necessary to get the, um, that thirty-two dollars.
What, what was FEH paid for that project?
I don't know, I can't, it was, um, I'm sorry, I have to give you that information.
And we, we could...
May I, may I make a comment? Um, the, the contract for the design is, in, in my interpretation, independent of the construction cost of the project.
Right.
So I'm hoping that when you make your evaluation, you would base it on FEH's performance, and the budgets that were put together were conceptual, so that was part of a service that we offered as the design firm, so that you could ask for the proper referendum dollar value, there are conceptual budgets, so our hope is that we have a conservative conceptual budget so that the school district can get more for their dollars, but the, the art, the contract for the designer is simply the design of the project as identified in the previous document.
So to clarify, Christie, the seven hundred and sixty thousand, that is our fee, and that's based, so that equates out to six point five, whatever that number is, on the eleven point nine million.
Yes.
So if, if the bids come in at nine million instead of eleven point nine, the percentage is just higher.
Correct.
You're still going to charge us seven hundred and sixty thousand.
Well, I mean, she's, she's a flat, it's a flat, no, it's a flat fee, it was, it was, well...
Oh, I see what you're saying, well, it's a flat fee.
It, I believe it was requested that it be of...
I just learned this tonight, too.
Okay, so, so...
He mentioned a percentage, right?
It, it's...
It was just for...
We can structure the contract either way, so it, it depends on your vantage point, so if we do a percent based on construction, then we get told, well, there's no basis for us to reduce the construction cost... So if we do a percent based on construction, then we get told, well, there's no basis for us to reduce the construction cost because our fee is based on a higher construction number. If we do a flat fee, we know the scope of the project, and if it costs more within the scope of the project, our fee would not increase. So it's up to the district to determine, would you like a flat fee or a percentage fee? We seem to get burned either way. So, I mean, our goal is, we represent the owner, we want to give you a good design. Typically, for a messy renovation project, I've seen upwards of twelve percent. So our fee is a mixture of, the addition is more straightforward than a renovation, which is messier, and hence that percentage that you end up with. Which is, I mean, it, it's a, I, I'm not gonna tell you it's a good percentage because I'm biased and I think it's a good percentage, but it is, when you look at industry standards, it is a competitive percentage, so it's up to the district on whether you want your contract to be structured with percentage of cost or a flat fee. We gave you a flat fee based on my interpretation of previous board discussion. If you would like a flat fee, or if you'd like a percentage-based fee, we can do that. As long as you're aware, our goal is to get you, to, to spend your dollars wisely. So either way, our goal is the same, it's just how the school district would like to see and how receptive you are to either fee structure.
So I think that would be, if, if we submit an RFP, I think that would be part of the wrinkle is, do we wanna request a flat fee bid?
We would have to know.
Or a percentage bid?
Or a flat fee, for sure.
And to your point, Larry, I mean, percentage bid doesn't necessarily incentivize the, the company to lower the total cost, whereas a flat fee potentially would if it's a, if it's a reasonable fee.
Knowing, knowing what I know tonight, I'm more comfortable with a flat fee than I, than I know what the costs are.
So to Andy's point, I think that we could potentially, within a couple of weeks, get a design fee bid from somebody else. But I don't think we're gonna get a, how much do you think this whole project would cost? You know, and how would you design it, kind of thing, within a few weeks? So if the board wants to compare fees to the seven sixty grand that's been quoted us, I'm not a problem with that, as long as it doesn't slow down the overall timeline and we're ready to go come day one in the summer.
But can you tell us, Christie, is the design staying the same with the location and the placement of the gym, the entrance? And the bus lanes and parking?
We were planning on moving forward with the concept sketch that was generated for the, at the charrette. So we were moving forward with the, the gym and, and early childhood.
In the same placement as well as sketch.
In that same classroom placement. I would just like to point out that our fee is now public, so you will likely get other fees that are, we're just disadvantaged at this point.
That, that's what I was thinking, you know.
Because our fee is still public on this video, so if it's simply a fee-based selection, it's difficult for us to now compete.
Well. When was that bid calculated, was that, is that something that's been a process over?
I'm sorry, what, what P, what?
Sorry, the, the flat fee that FEH was proposing, is that something that Kevin just kind of, was that an agreement prior with Luke?
It's in the concept budget as such.
It's in the concept budget.
Depending on the scheme, the fee altered slightly, but it, it was, we did have a fee, a design fee line item in each of the concept budgets that were generated at the charrette, and that's the fee that we gave you.
Why, sure. I think if we do, do this for an RFP for an architect, we have to take into consideration that is public before we make any decisions there, whether, you know, like she said, if somebody tries to undercut somebody or, I, I, that's just my thoughts, if we are gonna do this, if we do ask for other outside bids for an architect.
Can we vote on just accepting FEH as an architect, for as a design?
Do we want to make that motion?
There's a motion tonight.
Just tell me it's agenda.
Do you wanna make that motion?
Do we need to suspend the other half of that?
Larry was making a motion to.
Why would we have to suspend that if we're gonna hire, if the vote carries to ca, to hire them?
Because the.
The board is voting on it.
Yeah.
Just because the second part of the policy says anything over.
Inacted number one there, really, we need tons of motions on, on this project.
We only have five thousand, like, we don't have a hundred thousand.
Right, we didn't suspend the second part of the policy.
It's not on the agenda.
You can move that.
There's not gonna be a bigger.
FEH was studying nine hundred thousand dollar policy.
What's the policy reading?
I said we can move, no, we accept that we want FEH as a contractor.
If it's hundred thousand dollars. Do you have to have sealed bids? Anything over a hundred thousand dollars. We're just tentative.
Okay.
Contingent on us adding that to the agenda for December, because I'm like a couple of weeks away.
December tenth would be your next board meeting.
What, what Tony just said is, we'd like to make a motion to approve FEH contingent upon us suspending the hundred thousand. I mean, we're not really, it's a tentative thing, because we'll suspend it December tenth. Does that make sense? Approve FEH, so that I can move, move ahead. Or just wait till December tenth?
Why is the hundred thousand dollar policy?
Like I said.
Because it's, because the, because the contract is more than a hundred thousand dollars, is that what you're saying?
So the policy says you have to get that.
Well, didn't we approve the five hundred, or the five thousand dollar spending policy?
Nope.
That, that passed, didn't it?
Oh, we're gonna.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, suspend past quarter three.
You're right, quarter three.
That's a different, that's a different.
I know, it's part of the referendum.
It's part of the referendum.
Just to comment, I see the letter that there's a policy that allows you to win this policy, or I don't know what it is myself, or so, it's okay.
But I thought we could, we could move that we wanna hire FEH and suspend a hundred, can we do that together? Or not, tonight? What is the current policy about spending a hundred thousand dollars?
I mean, it's the second half of the five K spending policy, so it's really about interpretation, is did we suspend the entire purchasing policy for the referendum? If, if that was our intent, then the second half is also suspended.
We haven't numbered.
No way, Andy, you started spending three quarters of a million dollars and we approved, approved a five thousand dollar spending limit?
I'm not.
Unbelievable.
Don't put words in my mouth.
How do we know we're getting a fair value?
I simply said if that was our intent, I don't know what the intent of it was, it says five K up there, that's what I.
I don't think that was too.
What I really have a problem with is that, everybody knows it's seven hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. So if I'm another design firm, I'm gonna come in and bid seven hundred and forty-two or something, okay? Just like, you know, you went out and bid and you made it public, and then they said, well, I'm on another bid. Just like, you know, if we go out for bids on something, we make a public bid and say, oh, we want some more bids. Well, then a company's gonna come, of course, they're gonna come in under, I mean, who wouldn't?
This board is aware of that, Tony.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, I think, I want everybody to know what I think. Because I don't think it's, I don't think it's the right thing to do morally. I just don't, I just want everybody to know that. When you've agreed to something and it's been posted, it's not morally acceptable to say, oh, let's see who else can bid, so you can bid under. That, that's my opinion, take it or leave it.
Yeah, still saying a promise made is a promise kept, I, I have a little problem with this part of it, I certainly agree to get the bang for a buck. But you guys have been through two, you know, design firms apparently, and this one has done what they've done in good faith. I, I agree that there wasn't any signed contract, it doesn't seem like, but it just seems like it's very hard to bid this one out now. Because the, you know, Tony has a good point, I mean, you could say, well, I'll go for seventy fifty-two, and I don't know that I'm getting apples to apples, you know what I mean? I, I like the bird and the hen kind of analogy.
But certainly don't use this suspending that five thousand dollar.
Oh, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, I'd say, can we, can we move that we want to approve FEH as their architect and suspend the hundred thousand dollars? That's what I want to know, can we do that both tonight?
Yes, as an individual separate item, not, not a group.
Can we do that in one motion, or do we have to say contingent upon the hundred thousand and then put the hundred thousand on the next agenda for the next meeting? That's, but I'm wondering what we can do. Then we can vote on it, if it passes, it passes, if it doesn't, it doesn't. So I don't know.
Do we know which policy allows us to waive our policy?
Did he, did he reference the board policy?
He stated that there was one.
So policy six seventy-two is the one that's being referenced here, where it does say, bid should be sealed for contracts in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. So that's the second portion of, of the spending policy.
And I think to be clear, surveys, everybody's on the same page, our intent with the five K motion was to suspend only that portion of the policy.
Right, right, no, I agree.
Because I don't know that we stated that.
So the motion could be, we approve FEH as our architect contingent upon approval of the, of going over the hundred thousand dollar second part of the policy for the referendum.
Do we make that formal? Okay? Do we have a second to Tony's?
Well, second.
And is there any further discussion?
So we would just simply have an action item in December to waive
A hundred thousand.
this policy in regards to hiring.
That particular, yes, that particular item.
Any other comments?
So FEH will not be awarded a contract until December tenth?
Correct.
I mean, have we approved that?
If we approve it, you're not. You're not getting approval tonight by that motion.
Would, I mean, I'm, I'm confused here, so why not wait till December tenth on even the contract and bare minimum? Let's do a little research on our own to see, see if seven hundred and sixty thousand is a fair number.
I think that's.
Well, I, I'm saying, I would have said before, I wanna put this up in a motion, it's been seconded. Because morally, I think the board would rather do, so that's why I'm doing it.
That's the one.
Since it's been seconded, we do need to vote.
The policy that allows you to.
So temporarily suspend policies.
It's a, it's a normal, you can't do it, Tony, we cannot act on something against board policy, it's illegal.
How was that?
How can we, how can we take a, take action on this, it's against board policy?
We're contingent upon.
The motion is we approve FEH's contract contingent upon approval of a hundred, going over a hundred thousand.
Suspend the referendum.
That's the whole motion. Because I can't, we can't approve it, I can't make the motion to say we're gonna approve any going over the hundred thousand, if it's not on the. That's what I'm doing.
Can I just say, this is not on the agenda of approving the architect tonight?
Good point.
That motion wasn't to approve the architect.
It's for what?
No, no, it was to put it on the December meeting. Was to prove, to bid to approve architect contingent upon suspension of a hundred dollar. For December tenth.
This, yeah, so this is really, well, it's kinda like, this is December, god, do we do that right now?
I don't know.
That's tricky. Because it isn't on the action, that's on the.
No wonder it's still rolling.
Jeff.
I'll withdraw the second.
That's true.
They killed it.
It's not on the agenda. It's a RFP on the agenda.
Correct.
What was that, I have for action, by our, for recreation?
Because there was discussion whether or not there was a contract, signed contract between school district and FEH.
So then we'll just have to add this to December.
It was basically, so basically there was a verbal agreement and no signed contract.
Correct.
Can I just say something as a taxpayer? I don't have children in the elementary, but when I voted for the, on the referendum, I think, and maybe I just don't understand this, but my understanding that was that a plan was in place and I was voting for a plan developed by, like, that was all done, like, and I'm really dismayed that we're now, after, after voting, now we're gonna go out and talk to more architects? Like, you've got to be kidding, I'm sorry, I'm just like, I don't even know what to think of this. So that's just a taxpayer statement, and I don't have kids in the elementary, so it's not like I, I'm weighing in on that, but when I voted, I voted with the understanding that the board was ready to honor what the taxpayers, what the voters said, because they had a plan, and this was the plan.
I, I think what the problem was is that we thought, everybody assumed we had a contract with FEH, and there was no real written contract with FEH, it was just like, well, do this and then please do that. I think that's, and then we came to the meeting last night, and the twelve, and it was whatever, the twelve, and found out that we don't have a signed contract, so we need a signed contract. And then in the process of getting the signed contract, it was all white, and they opened it up to other design firms to see what kind of price, I, I believe I'm saying that correctly, pretty much. And that's why we're here. But I understand.
Yeah, that was a clear.
So we'd all lose three weeks if we end up approving them.
We could do that, maybe they have to just postpone some of the other.
To Chris's comment, I wanna, I wanna give my opinion to Chris's comment.
You know, I, I, my heart is pounding, I don't usually speak.
Anyhow, this, this.
It's no disrespect, I, it's just I'm so confused.
Well, I mean, it is the most money that this school has ever spent, that this, this community, to my knowledge, has never spent twelve million dollars at one time, ever. We're, we're setting a record here, and I'm gonna do everything in my power to make sure that this doesn't break.
Right.
That's, that's my job on this.
It was a combination. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused about the agenda item.
Me too.
Because it says RFP language, so that assumes that, that assumes we want to put out an RFP for the architect contract, which we never really decided now, let's say that we vote, let's say there's a motion tonight to put out a request or proposal for the architect project and it fails. So does that mean that FEH is, is just kind of the, will continue to do their work as they have as the presumptive architect until we put on the agenda who we actually want to award the contract to? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
I mean, I don't, not necessarily speaking for them, but if I heard this, I would halt work until I knew I was getting the agenda.
That makes sense to me.
Oh, there's a person on the committee meeting next Monday, shoot, we just make it a regular, kind of special board meeting and. and put both the language and an action item on.
My, my understanding is that.
It's only a week.
You know, my understanding is that whoever's awarded the design contract is going to put out the RFP to the general contractor.
For us, it seems the school district were putting out said RFP, yes.
Okay.
So we would put it out on your behalf, yes.
Okay, so, I don't feel like we need to be, we can advise on the RFP language for the general contractor, but it seems like that's a service that would be provided by the, the design firm. Right, so I, unless I got this.
They would just approve the RFP.
We would approve, we'd approve the language once it's been designed, once it's been drawn up by the design firm, correct? Okay. And Larry, you just want to know that this flat fee is competitive, correct?
Absolutely, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, so how do we, can we get that information without requesting bids? Knowing that going, putting out to bids with an open bid already in public puts everyone, you know, puts FEH at disadvantage? I mean, are we able to research this on our own and, and bring information back to the board to say, hey, Christie's right, this, this, this project was twelve million dollars for a remodel, or this was, twelve, sorry, twelve percent for, for a remodel, or this was, this design firm charged eight percent, or this was a nine hundred thousand dollar fee for a comparable project? I mean, can we, can we do some research on that?
Are there enough local school things moving currently? Cuba City and other places, would they be willing to tell us what the?
Cuba City's a little different, just because that was the design build project, so it's just a little different. The American Institute of Architects would probably have some industry standards that you could look at from a fee standpoint, or you could do some research and, and try to provide some of that information. There are general industry, industry standards, and they're gonna provide that to, to help you evaluate.
What do you think, Mitch, do you think you can? Try to get that information?
I can reach out to some of the.
It doesn't necessarily, I, I don't think it has to be at Monday's meeting, but, like I said, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to get the designer, the architect set in stone by the December tech board meeting. Do you think that would slow things down tremendously, Christie?
Well, I think.
Took three weeks to figure this out?
I would simply ask the board if you want us to stop for the three weeks, or if you would authorize us to proceed on an hourly basis, that would be paid, and then if we did get hired, it would be part of the design fee for work yard accomplished. Does that make any sense?
Yeah.
Then we would hand thousands of dollars worth of work to a new architect?
I mean, I, I, I'm not suggesting that, but, you know, if, if everyone involved needs to just take a pause to say, yes, FEH is giving us a competitive deal, we like the flat fee instead of a percentage, let's go with it. You know, we feel like this is the best deal for the taxpayer and for us, given our relationship with FEH and given the fee that, that we've been offered. You know, if, if we need a little pause just to feel good about that, I'm okay with that. But I don't want to take two or three months, you know, and I don't want to reinvent the wheel, I don't want to duplicate services. You know, but if we do our research and it's like, this fee of FEH is, is so way out of, you know, comparable situations, you know, we have to, we have to rethink this, you know, then, then I'm listening, you know, but that's not the impression I'm getting from, from anyone who's talked to me from the industry so far. But, but I, I'm happy to confirm that, you know, with more information, if it doesn't take that long to get.
I mean, I'd like to put it on Monday's agenda, if we're gonna be here.
The decision for the, who the architect would be?
Or an RFP, or whatever direction we're gonna go. Whether we're going to hire an architect, waive the policy and hire an architect, or RFP.
Okay, okay.
So do you think we need to have, we need to have an action item of whether to hire FEH first? If that goes, then we don't have to worry about the RFP, but if not, then we have an RFP, an action item for an architect?
Can we just be general on the agenda, just say, you know, make a decision about the architect contract? And then we can make whatever motion we want that's consistent with that decision?
I'm just saying there's.
I think between now and the next, I mean, you know, we decide to do that, I will call, or have Mitch call Bob Beller. And we'll get worded the way it's gotta be done legally, because I have no idea.
Sure. Yep.
I just wanted to.
So my question is, do you want this on next Monday, or do you want to wait till December tenth?
Yeah, I mean, if we can make a decision.
I mean, that RFP, you said will be ready tomorrow, right? For the contractor.
Yes, the contractor one.
So I'm assuming you guys, Kevin was working on the architectural one too, wasn't he?
He was probably operating under. He's probably operating under the flat fee contract.
The assumption, okay.
So it would be just general contractor, if he's actually doing it?
Yes.
So we put table list here.
Or not. The language for the general contractor, yeah, I would.
You're at, you're at number three, the RFP language for architect.
Is it clear to the board they don't want to go up to RFP then for, for the architect? It doesn't sound like there's much support for that tonight.
I mean, I, I don't feel like it's the best idea, but i- if we can get the information we need to feel like this is a, this is a good deal for us, economically. You know, if we can get the information we need without doing sealed bids.
In a short amount of time.
In a short amount of time, you know, I'd be okay with that, but, I mean, I want to make sure that everyone feels good about it. I think if we go to sealed bids, that's, that's playing with, that's not a fair playing field.
No, no, nurse is already exposed, it's like throwing her ace before you should, you know, how does, no.
But to your point, Larry, you know, we gotta feel good, I, I don't have any idea if seven hundred grand is a, is a good fee or not, I, I don't know. So, I mean, if, if, if we did a little bit of research and said this is, this is a competitive fee, you know, I, I'd be more inclined to support it. But I do not want to, I do not want to delay the process. You know, I, so I, I want to take a pause without unnecessary delays.
We can reach out to a couple of people real quick and find out some, some numbers, though, I do think that, just some.
Do you hope it's for Monday?
We could try it, I mean, we, we can't.
Well, I don't want to put it on the agenda, we're not gonna be able to actually vote on it Monday.
Well, I thought you were gonna bring project last year.
Right.
Was it design builder architect?
I'm not sure, I can call Jeff. And they used HSR.
They used somebody different.
That's the same group that's coming back.
If we don't have the information we need.
True.
But to Lisa's point, it's not on the agenda, we can't vote on it.
Correct. So it's put on the agenda for Monday night, and you guys say for the personnel, it's gonna be what time?
Six.
Why don't we do our regular meeting at six, and you guys can eat after that? Does that work for you, Andy?
Yeah. Does that work?
Larry?
Yeah, that's.
I can make six quiet.
Monday?
Sure.
So we do the regular.
Regular board meeting at six?
Special board meeting at six, and then the personnel will follow after. So I just need a motion to adjourn.
We won't.
Let's list, list that as a summary.
So we took no action on three, basically, what happened?
Yeah.
Correct.
I've got a motion to adjourn by Tony's in the second. Second, and all was in favor? Everybody opposed? Motion carried. We'll need to get Monday at six.
Make sure to, you might be aware of this. Oh, we should shut that off.